Daniel. I want to think everyone's coming on our off week and at an early in time. First item, we don't have any minutes, so is there motion skip over item two and move on to? Item two and three and move on to item four.
The rule.
Second.
Second.
All favor.
All right.
Right.
Oh yeah.
Daniel is here. And some, you know, little bit of confusion with the process. Some of the applications we approved staff has claims they haven't had a chance to vet them. So there's a memo here from Corina and Carol, all had time to read it. Why don't we start off with that? You want to summarize, Corina?
Sure, yeah, so what typically happens when we get these site plans or subdivision applications in-house? Is we have legally by state statute, we have fifteen days to review the application and determine if it's complete and then put it on a planning board agenda. Typically, because we have a newspaper that only runs once a week, that limits our ability to put the notice requirements in the newspaper, it shortens our time essentially, because we don't have a newspaper that we can put stuff in every day. So that fifteen day timeframe ends up getting reduced in some cases depending on when we need to get the notice in the newspaper. So.
Does it have to be in a newspaper and be posted in two public places like?
Not, not for subdivision and cycle. So, so that limits our ability to get things in the newspaper, so it reduces the time we have in-house to actually go through the application. And what we find is our staff in-house has a lot on their plate, we might get it in the door, we might not review it for two to three days, and then by the time we review it, we have notice in the newspaper and we're starting to break tomorrow all over again. And what we've seen happen is developers come in and their packets are missing map, so they're not the right size plan or we don't have the digital copy, so then we're kind of always chasing them down. So what Carol and I are proposing is, as you can see in the outline, is when applications come in, we're going to create a checklist in-house, we're going to start tracking them similar to what we do the building permits, where we sign them a number, we assign a deadline, we kind of start systematically approaching how we're going to address these. So when an application will come in the door, we have the fifteen days to review it for completeness. If it's not complete, we will reach out to the developer or the applicant and say, we're missing these items, we're not putting them on the agenda. If it is complete, we'll put them on the agenda, we'll notice them, we'll go through the same motions that we would for any other application. It gets put on the agenda, it comes to the planning board. Again, because of that timeframe in which we have to get it in the newspaper and get it on the planning board, we don't necessarily always have time to have Nate, our public works director, review it, have fire to review it, have Carol to review it, and myself to review it, have police review it, have what, you know, anyone of the department heads that we kind of would want to get an eye on it. We don't really have that time. So what we're proposing is when an application comes in, we'll review it within fifteen days, we'll say, yes, it's complete, no, it's not complete, if it's complete, we'll put it on the agenda, we'll bring it in front of the planning board. At the planning board meeting, when the application is accepted, we are hoping that the planning board would be agreeable to then allow what is statutorily allowed to give us thirty days to vote on whether it's either approved or not. That would allow us to have those thirty days to have public works, fire, police, planning in-house, review the application and compile any questions or concerns they may have with the application, and then present that to the planning board at the same time that application is discussed, so the planning board can address some of the department heads' concerns, whether it's the road radius or water sewer connections or whatnot. I know that it sounds initially like it's going to slow down the process, but I'm telling you it's, it's not going to, it's actually going to expedite the process, because what happens is if water and sewer, fire, planning, police, whatever, don't review this application before the planning board, it's presented to the planning board and the planning board approves it. We then, on the back end of things, have to then go back and forth with the developer and the surveyor and the, you know, there's time wasted with the back and forth, that if we could just address the concerns during the approval process, we could have either conditions of approval, or we could have some of these things ironed out, so when it comes back in-house, and then we're talking building permits, recording my Lars, doing everything like that, we know, okay, all the lot sizes are correct, the road radius is correct, water and sewer is correct, it allows us to then not have so much back and forth after the fact with the developers, after the approval is already made. It gives us a little bit more teeth in the game to say, okay, well, the lot sizes are correct, there is no wetlands, the road makes sense, the, the capacity makes sense. Like I said, I know it presents as if it's going to take longer, but i- in, in reality, the project will come to fruition faster if we address all these concerns right off the bat rather than after.
I mean, subjects can take sixty days just to get the application accepted.
No, it will take.
Fifteen days to review it and thirty is before the board accepts it, so then thirty day review and then probably two more weeks to come back to the planning board.
Too much.
Yeah, too much.
Sixty days, I would say, yeah, sixty days, it would take sixty days to get an approval, correct?
How long does it take naturally to go through, I mean, it started here and then it went back to like the police department to the.
You're, you're going to get approval right away, usually well, historically, the planning board accept, accepts the application as complete and approves it or denies it in the same evening. But how, when that project, how long that project takes to come to fruition after planning or quarter, planning board approval is much longer, because then it's the, our town engineer and the surveyors going back and forth, or the, you know, the developers going back and forth, and we don't have as much power in-house as the planning board does, right? We are just the town planner and the town manager and the town engineer, so when we say things like that lot is undersized, or that lot has wetlands on it, or you need to account for this, you need to account for that, they say, well, the planning board already approved it. So we have less kind of teeth in the game at that point to make these changes or make these recommendations, because.
Okay, but they can come back with an application, you know, they can have their hearing and you can just, we, you can make a recommendation that it's not complete and we won't accept it as complete and not stop the clock.
But, but the completion is specifically a checklist, the completion is just, we have twelve copies of the map, we have a digital copy of it, it, it's not the actual meat and potatoes of the application, it's not the actual what's being built, what's being proposed, it's essentially a checklist of items that says, yep, the application is filled up, yes, the letters have been notified, yes, we have twelve copies of the map, it's not actually the details of what is actually being proposed or constructed.
I think it would be, I mean, as a new person, honestly, from referring, be re- reviewing Prince and Coolidge and submitting to town, it's nice to have all all the ducks in the row before it's, it's presented, I mean, that way we wouldn't have any questions about fire or electrical or road size and so on and so forth, I mean, I think it would take a lot of.
I know we used to do. They bring the application in. It would be checked for completeness and by the staff. But at the same time, it was also given to the staff to review, like the public works director, fire department, all that, they would, they would look at it at town hall and, and give their questions to the, you know, the administration and then Carol or whoever the planner was would bring those questions in. So I can remember on the back on a plan board, we'd say, does staff has any comments? And staff would, would have either written or given comments to the planner and that will come in. It's, I mean, sixty days seems like a lot, but I didn't know if we can make it down to forty-five. I think it's important, whatever we, whatever we do, make sure that we really need to put a timeline on it, whatever that timeline is, so the applicant knows. You know, if you're, you're coming in and you've got all your ducks in a row and all your paperwork, it's going to take you thirty days or forty-five days. If you don't, it's from the date you are complete, and I, I don't think it's unfair to look at an applicant and say your stuff's not complete. It's up to them to make sure it comes in.
Right, but I mean, we can accept it, there's no timeline for us to accept an application for as complete. Once we accept the application is complete, the sixty-five day clock for.
But, but it's the same thing, whether you make it sixty days on the start or whether you do it tonight at the meeting, you know what I mean, so.
I'm asking, if I submit an application for, you know, subdivision, I mean, should you have to wait sixty days to come before the planning board?
Well, you won't have to, if, if it's complete, they're going to take fifteen days and see if the application is complete, if it's complete, within that fifteen days, they can schedule a hearing.
And I.
So it, it could be, it could actually be thirty days if it maybe, or it could be, it could be forty-five, but if it's not complete, then they have to go back and get it all taken, taken care of, and I, I can tell you, I've talked to actually when I was talking to my wife, like the stuff they do in Belmont, if people don't submit their stuff complete, they just hand back and say, this is not ready, when you get it complete, you can bring your whole completed packet in. That where they're, the staff's not wasting their time, we're not wasting our time sitting here looking at stuff that we just get the night of or two days before.
What, what do you think, what does complete mean in Belmont? Does that mean they have all their paperwork ready for review? Or does that mean once the staff has reviewed it?
It's everything. Staff reviewed it.
So you mean you wanted to do all the engineering work and everything before the board's even approved it? I mean, I mean, the applicants got to spend money.
But wait, you gotta remember, we can make, when they submit their application, we can make approval condition on engineering, making sure that this is done right, making sure.
We already do that.
We already do that now, that's what I'm saying, so we still have some leeway somewhere, I think, to be able to make that work.
So in the thirty-seven years we've had zoning, town has already, always, board has always approved it, and you know, everything was done administratively after approval, and I know there's a little bit of a boom going on now, that's.
Well, I know, but you, you can see just by the one we just did. You know, I mean, there, there was some head staff had a chance and engineering had a chance or whatever to take a look at it, some things would have been brought up, like, you know, between, between master planning and, and, and density requirements and all of those things, you know, but those could have been picked up, I mean, I had men drop something off to Carol today or pick it up, my stuff ahead and Ray was here. And he, you know, it's, it's they need a little time to deal with some of that stuff, you know, and they were.
If I can just say, also, this is, I should have prethessed before I started talking, is that this will be not for minor subdivisions and not, this would be for the major subdivision and the major site plan. So if someone's coming in and they just want to split their lot in half, or someone's coming in and is only making one lot, three lots, that's still considered a minor subdivision.
Well, I think we have to, we have, we should define it, we should define.
I think it is defined, isn't it?
I think anything over twenty. Lots, it's a major subdivision.
It's defined, but, but site plans are not.
Right.
So that's under, under these, this procedure, which, which is, I think, a good concept, all right? That South Peak gets put in the same procedure list as this, this little building next door that wanted to put in a restaurant.
Restaurant.
Tea, tea.
Tea garden.
Tea garden, thank you. You know, so, so where that was quick and easy, I mean, we approved that.
Right.
No.
A lot, yeah.
That could have been a minor.
Minor, right, but, but then we would have to define, I mean, some divisions are defined, we'd have to define in site plan. Sure.
What is?
Minor.
Minor, or what is this? And, and you, you know, here, here's, I, I guess, one suggest tweak to this is when you come before the, when they, when the applicant comes before the planning board, you've already vetted out, make sure their application is complete, you, Carol, you, the staff has. So we accept the application as complete. Then could our next question be, are there any issues that the staff needs to look at, whether that be Nate?
Fire.
Or Ron, or Ray, or whoever.
And they've got fifteen days to do that, so.
Well, I, I think the answer is if, 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 if it's a big subdivision and you say Ray's not looked at this, Nate's not looked at this, and Ron's not looked at this, I think the, rather than approving it on condition, which again, we approve it, then they fight over the conditions, we say, okay, we're going to put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Correct.
And, and they can come back and, and, and we'll get it. If, if it's like this one we just did the other day on, on the tea garden, it's like, you know, there are water, the, the, the setbacks, they are changed, it's just a change of use. We ask staff, are there any department heads or, or engineers that need to look at it? No, all right, then let's move forward.
Perfect, so I would, that's great, but I'm going to submit a plan, someone's going to submit this plan for a site subdivision, they're going to submit a drainage plan, just so I mean, is it complete because they've submitted the drainage plan but it's subject to review? Or do they have to have the drainage plan review before it's subject, except for it's considered complete?
I think the applicant, you can consider, they, they submitted the drainage plan, so the application is complete.
Okay.
But the application is not approved.
It's not vetted.
It's not vetted, it's not approved until it's reviewed.
They, they could put a, put a lighting plan in, it's like when they submit a plan for a building, they put a lighting plan in for all their landscaping, like, no, that, that plan's complete, but it may not meet our regulations, so we look at it and someone on the board says, hey, I don't think that's the right light, Joe's most houses right here, you know, you're shining in the back bedroom.
So, I mean, basically, everything's going to be on the checklist, but it's not going to be vetted, and then we can have our hearing.
And I think we should have something on our checklist that says that the staff has looked at it. Or someone needs to tell us.
Staff's going to be at the meeting, they can tell us.
Yeah, well, it doesn't always happen, but if you have it, you can say, has staff looked at this, then you just cover your bases that way.
And again.
And the only reason I say that is because the other night, during all of this, I assumed that was the wrong thing to do, because we were coming in for site plan review, that the staff had looked at it, everybody had looked at it, I really thought that. And I, I, that just wasn't the case, I guess.
It would be nice to have them look at it first, I think.
Yeah.
Take a lot of questioning out. Save a lot of our.
Joe.
But we're just saying, we did do that in the past, when you came on.
Yeah.
You bring your plans in, look at, look at it. They want to get approved, we wouldn't go to the, the plan itself would go to the plan. Find things wrong with, send it back and they come back in for another, another hearing. One example, the syntax, they put a road in the south mountain, they put a bridge in, it's only eight, gosh, if the bridge going over the road, it may be high, you couldn't go in with it with a G, right? I brought that up, I don't believe you have that one.
It's a hundred minutes. A hundred minutes.
But anyway, if you don't go and look at it yourself, you can't tell what is, what it is, but I went all over the property, we do a second plan review physically on every property, which we haven't done that for years.
But, but that's why we initially had, and I call it preliminary review, what do you call it?
Conceptual.
Conceptual, that was the whole reason for conceptual was.
Here are our concerns.
Yeah, I mean, it's not mandatory.
Here's what, here's what we're thinking about doing. What do you think we need to do? And the whole planning board would say, you've talked to the fire chief, you need to talk to the public works, you need to talk to Corina, you need talk to Ray, and then they would go back out and do that, then they would come back in, but I think Corina's, what she's saying is it probably would take less time on her, on a major subdivision or major plan than it would, to do it her way, then it would be to do the preliminary and then come back and then go back, and so you're probably shortening it up, I think, you know what I mean, Jim? So if someone comes in.
You get all the ducks in a row, you don't have to worry about that.
Right. Yeah.
But again, then ducks may be in a row.
It might not be the right row.
But, or, or it might not meet our satisfaction, but they've, they've put something on the plan and we all say, oh, majority of us say, we don't like it, like an eight foot bridge.
Well, then they have.
Okay, let's, let's say. Let's just say that that planning board approved that, either they didn't catch it or they thought it was okay, and then the town plan, the town manager has to fight, then town, the, the fire chief then has to fight in, and I can see it, the developer's saying, the planning board approved this, and we're saying, the fire truck can't fit under the, under the bridge. Okay, this is going to eliminate that, that type of situation.
When you're going.
But like in, in, if we take section four and just add in that, that the, the town staff, again, whether it's you or Carol, or Ron, will weigh in on whether this, they feel this project.
Can be fast tracked.
Either needs, needs staff review or does not need staff review.
I think that's what I mean, I mean, you got someone, you're going to just make someone spend money with the engineering before they get approval, I mean, basically, once the application is is accepted as complete, and you're going to, they're going to spend money on an engineer without knowing whether or not they're going to get approval.
Yes, Jim, I mean, assembly, you don't have to spend money to make money.
That's what we do now, right?
No, we, we, we approve with conditions and it goes, goes through the review.
They set up a escrow after that.
After the approval, though.
But, you know, you're leading, you're leading into money, that's part of what I, you know, one of the questions I would have here is that.
Yeah.
If, if there's not a, and I don't know, I talked to Corina today, when we were talking, right, but I think we need to look at, is there enough planning staff to do this? And, and to me, i- if there's not enough planning staff to do this, then what we need to do is we should be looking at either hiring more and char- and charging more for for applications, charging more for inspections, charging more for whatever you got to do so that that helps pay to get it reviewed, and we talked about this before, expediting and paying a little bit more money if it was a bigger, if someone came in with a big site plan and they wanted to say, look, you know, what can we do? It's along the lines of what the selectmen are doing with the water tank, you know, so you're hiring specialists over here, be able to get it fast tracked a little bit. If an applicant maybe want to do that, is there any way that we could say, look, this is our staff, they're really busy, and, and I know that's, maybe that's not the right way, because other people with the money can get ahead of the people that don't have the funding, but I'm just trying to find a way to, if we don't have enough staff, if that's the case, to be able to review some, because things are rolling and down now, I mean, we're, we're getting up pretty regularly.
Do you think that this process is going to involve more staff time or less staff?
Well, I think, I think based on history, I'm, I'm not sure that the staff that we have.
I think he's concerned the staff is backed up.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm going to say, I think that this.
You can range it for us.
Streamline staff costs, either in other words, in, instead of us approving it and saying, these are the conditions and you guys worry about it, we get to solve the conditions ahead of time, which would streamline the, the.
And if she's fine with it, I'm, I'm okay, but it just seems like we hear a lot, and, and maybe this will change some of that, but we hear a lot that staff's backed up for one reason or the other, someone's out, someone's this, someone's that, and I mean, you know, it, maybe, maybe we should look at that, maybe.
I mean, I'll, I'll comment to that, could we use another staff member in the planning department? Absolutely, hands down, easily, we could fill that person's.
If you do that, I'd like to know how much time they allocated with them, how much time you used for the rest of the town, I've been asking that for twenty years.
Well.
Wait a minute.
We're, we're talking about a high.
Let me think, please. The planning board has a budget. Half the time it starts with other town staff, none that relate to the planning board, it all comes down to the same tactics. It doesn't tell what's allocated to each department, that's what I've been fighting for a long time.
The only thing you're wrong, the only thing you're wrong about is we don't have a budget, the, the budget of the planning board, that's right there, that's ours.
But we.
He's the one who proved it.
He's talking about the planning department, not the planning board.
The planning department is run underneath our town manager.
Our planning department has its own budget.
Has its own budget.
It has its own section, but it's made by the board of selectmen.
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying to fight about who has it, I'm just trying to say.
What you're saying, that money that's in the planning budget is being.
Used in other departments.
I, I, I absolutely disagree with that, Joe.
I've seen it.
I, I'm telling you, I'm the town manager, I'm the one who signs people's.
I've been there for thirty years, too.
I know, I'm, I'm, right, I haven't.
And aside from that subject, there's another alternative. We have big projects, one time we had five big projects, I just said that's going on with one plan and one staff, but we allocated some of the work to the North Country Council, which we are, which we are a paying member of, they have staff to do it and they do it on a pro, on the basis of staff that that would alleviate, alleviate a lot of the staff that are having to pay them overtime, rather than pay them medical, that's pay retirement, there would still be, had a cost going by the development, but still have a little bit of a point when it's, can you get the, can you get for Dean's staff for planning, I don't see him.
In a yesteryear, quite possibly, I think in today's world with the labor market right now, absolutely not.
You're backing up.
We've talked to North Country Council, what we need.
I'm trying to say it's wrong, I'm saying.
But we, we wouldn't pay for it, though, the applicant.
I, I think we're trying to find a solution to a.
Problem that doesn't exist.
That doesn't, it doesn't exist, and this is going to.
I just asked, I just asked.
I know, but this is going to make it more streamlined, now, now, look, in a month from now and eight months from now.
It's not working.
If the planning department comes forward and say, this isn't working and we're overwhelmed and we can't, we can't process this fast enough, then let's have this discussion, who do we hire, do we hire, do we outsource, do we change the procedure, but, but let's, let's.
I just want to make sure that the applicant, that all applicants are treated fairly, first of all, and that they know they know that the timeline, from the time they drop all their paperwork off and put it in, if it's all complete, if they're smart enough to figure it out, they have, they have an engineer and an architect, whatever they need, and they say, here's the town's requirements, get it all ready for us, buddy, and, and they get it ready and they drop it off to the town, they, I think they need to, they should be assured, you will be heard by the planning board within thirty days, forty-five, fifteen, whatever it is.
That exists, it's.
That way there, they know, you know, I mean, there's no, no, no guessing about it, it might go a week one way or the other, but I mean, I think that.
I mean, part of this is, you know, basically, the decision we made a few weeks, it was kind of being appealed staff. So I mean, one that came in a few weeks ago, was that, that was complete, they had copious amount of engineering data and.
But the engineering was wrong.
Right, that's, but wait a minute, I mean, so they had everything in, so this, you know, then we could accept it.
You could accept the application as complete.
Right.
But then you proceeded to accept the, approve the application, and now we are reviewing it, and in our review, we're finding that lot size.
Well, the application, we, we, we approved the site plan.
That's what I'm saying.
We approved the subdivision.
But I mean, there was nothing wrong with accepting that application as complete last week.
No.
Okay, I mean, it was complete.
The application itself was complete, yes, but then you proceeded to approve the site plan or the subdivision.
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 And then we did the site plan and did the same thing, we could have approved the application for the subdivision as complete and then let Gray look at it if we had any questions about it, and then we could have approved the site plan application as complete and then let all the staff look at it and then get back with their comments.
With recommendations.
With.
Right, and, and I think, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, yes, yes.
So I mean, that way then, there's no approvals given, you have a chance to say, uh, look, these, these densities don't look right, or the master plan, or, you know, things like that. I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Oh, Daniel was talking, I couldn't hear.
All right. No, but, but, that's exactly it, we want to make sure, is, are the lot sizes all fifteen thousand square feet? Are, i- is, are the wetlands delineated, are, you know, it's.
Where's your open space?
Where's your, you know, like, we would rather address these comments and have the planning board make sound decisions based on our comments than then try to resolve those after the fact.
Basically, what you're saying, we're both talking about the same thing, you're saying, a different semantic where you're approaching.
Sure.
But I'm not disagreeing with you. But I'm sure if it speeds up even more if we can.
Oh, agreed, I mean, I don't like sitting on things, but I think you also, we also got to remember that our town planning staff is not just solely here for the planning board and subdivisions and site plans, right? Our town planning staff is also managing the thirty-six building permits we have on the docket and, you know, and everything else that.
Nine-one-one coordination.
Nine-one-one coordination.
Did they do the, did they do the short-term rentals, too?
We do short-term rent, well, I mean, Granicus is helping us that, but we're.
When it works.
It's working, it's working right now.
It's good.
But it, it's not just
I know, it's.
Subdivisions and site plans, you know, we also are doing all the code enforcement, all the building permits, all the LUCCs, all the escrow accounting, it's not like Carol and her two part-timers are just doing the planning board applications, they're also doing a multitude of other tasks that also take up time.
And like we were talking about, what, how about the, but the, where your money's allocated, that's the point, it's not going to cost time, any money either way. I'd like to know how much it costs the planning board to run, so we can make a better presentation to the town. Whatever, because like you have two part-timers using other departments.
Could we? Uh? Yeah, could we, could you put together something that says, here's what the planning staff does for the planning board? Those things you've just labeled, so we'll, and here's how many staff we have. I don't care what their names are, just A, B, C, and A, this one works forty, this one works thirty, and here's, here's a list of what they do. You know, and that way there, because it might, might open my eyes, or all of ours, and say, you know what, there's a shitload of stuff here to do and.
And to do, so you might give all my allocate to the planning department.
Right.
Well, we might be able to charge more for stuff to help offset some of the fees, maybe take more time for more staff.
The problem taking two months, you had one house lot built, or your friend of mine did. Two months, you had one house lot permitted, should have taken most of the day and a half.
Well, that, well, I, I, I'll disagree with that, I mean.
This would have worked.
When was this?
A year and a half ago, the guy wants to move out of town, he has much help with the town.
And it took him two months.
Yeah, yes.
I mean.
I can bring him in to, to, to verify if you want.
But I mean, two months, am, am I? But I mean, two months, am I, I mean, is not a long a time, is not a long time for a single-family home building permit to be turned around with the. Stormwater regulations and the regulations we have in this community that the community has voted on, that the community wants to see. I don't think it's, especially when we're getting applications.
And I'm. Steve has a question.
Like I said before, we spend way too much time worrying about speedy delivery. Because I've been around, I've, you know, I spent twenty, twenty-five hours a week going to and from work. And every job we think is gonna start in the spring, we're trying to get concrete in the ground before the ground freezes. Is how long it takes sometimes, it's not this quick turnaround, I mean, that's great, I think he, he's been around.
Well, I mean, it's for other people to take.
They don't have anything to do, they spin them right out, but. That's why you put the, how long, on it, it's gonna be, you know, so they know. You know, I mean, and as, you know, we take a look at, you know, the minor, major, whatever you wanna call it. You know, something needs something shorter, should not take us long, but something that needs a little more, as long as you have all your stuff, but it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be our problem. If someone submits an application for a site plan review. And say it's not complete by a couple of things, comes into us, and then they send it in. We have a meeting on a Wednesday, they send it in on, on a Tuesday night, Carol's trying to rush it off to us, and we gotta review it. I'm not like that, I study stuff.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but you know, the board has can always say, well, gee, we just got this yet today, but no one definitely wrote it that way.
We don't do that, so let's, I I think we should take that out of the mix, I think we should just say, look, it's gotta be in, because it helps the staff and it helps us.
Good, two years ago, remember, we bought. What's that?
You're right, you have a steel trap.
This go on with you, with what you're saying. With the planning board have already made a mention, we don't have anything but Friday afternoon when it, I was closed, we can't inhibit it, unless there's emergency basis.
It's one thing if it's a minor thing, like a debt, but if it's a, a major subdivision, then that, then there's.
Major subdivision can submit one piece paid for on Monday, we can still hear, I mean, it could be something simple, like.
But I think, you know, you get a treat.
You could use your judgment. You know, gee, this is kind of complicated.
But, you know.
Gonna think on it, but, well, this is some simple, like.
Something like this won't take. Can't bring the other pride, having ready, but.
Well, and if I can give you an example. Multiple of the, a few of the subdivisions you approved last fall have yet to receive. Town staff stamp of approval, because they're still working out stormwater management and drainage and all that stuff, so you, the planning board, I think. In theory, is trying to be productive and get these, you know, applications passed and trying to, you know, provide a. I don't wanna say a convenience, but work with the developers to have maybe an expedited process or a speedy process. But we have subdivisions that the planning board approved in October and November of last year that have still. Not embedded by town staff, so it's still not considered an approved subdivision, because they haven't met the town regulations. And they can't get any land permits, but that's what, that, Jim, is town staff then for four months going back and forth. With contractors where we could for thirty days go back and forth and have a clean plan presented to you.
I mean, the other thing that we. Need to be conscious of is that, I know before Ray's had some uh. Big plans he's had to look at, so it's taken a little while, because he's, I'm sure he's got other business he does too.
Right.
So i- i- if it's not Ray, if it was somebody else, an architect, or somebody that said, look, I just haven't had a chance to get to this yet. So we have the ability to say, can we get somebody else and 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 to just fill in, like you would say the same thing about North Country Council, is there. Someone who can just step in just to relieve some of the pressure, and so that timeline doesn't get. You know, longer.
Is it a possibility? Sure, I don't see why, I don't see why not, I mean, but.
I'm not trying to take the work. If he's busy, and he can't take the applicant, sorry, we've only got one engineer, or one architect, or one, you know.
Could even find somebody, could be right, I mean, I think it's a good idea.
You don't know if you don't look, but I mean, I'm just saying.
I agree that if we, if the planning board is agreeable to trying this out. And if it doesn't work in six months, seven months, eight months, and we feel as if it's having a. Reverse effect of how we think it's gonna happen, then maybe that's what we look at, do we need another? Third-party, you know, on board, or do we need another staff member, do we need? To change, but I truly think that this is going to help the planning board make better decisions on the applications that are presented. And I think it's gonna help town staff, because when it's done, there's gonna be a set of conditions, it's gonna be, you need to be this, you need to do this. And then the applicant knows, all right, we have to address these five things, when you guys approve it, then the applicant still has to come into the town and has no idea what the town's going to essentially. Revise or change or make on and on.
Will this sort of people's engineering cost, will they be the same, will they be less, will they be more?
I think it's the same, I mean, it's no different whether, I actually think it could potentially be less for them, because there'll be less back and forth between. The architects and the engineers and the town engineer and town staff.
Yeah, I I I, not to be late for any of it, but I'm all for what you said here, but as long as make sure that. As I said, that the timeline is made so that the applicants have an idea of what the timeline is, if they bring all their stuff in, if. Whether it's fifteen days, thirty, forty-five, sixty, whatever it is, so they know.
Yeah.
You know, and and and. And I think we need to define, as OJ was saying, you know, major or minor, figure out what that is so they know. They could, when they look at, you can say, this is a minor one, we can probably have this done in thirty days. If it's a major one, you can say, this is gonna take you forty-five, sixty days, just so you know, if you have all your information, please, so it gives them a timeline. The worst thing you can do is just keep it now, and thirty days turns into forty-five, turns into ninety, turns into, you know, so that's, at least they can then have somewhere.
I guess someone could bring something in, and you know, the staff, I think it's minor, and we can decide that, well, geez, we did it a little more vetting, it's a big decision.
Sure.
Or vice versa, you know, or vice, but I don't know, Carol is pretty. Three, three lots is, you know, between four, five or six, that's relatively minor, too.
But again, if they come in, if they come in and they recommend that that, you know, this, for whatever reason, the subdivision, okay, it's, it's eight lots. Twelve lots, okay, certainly more than the three, right?
Right.
But if they can say, we don't believe this needs further review of the town staff, we've looked at what plans they've submitted, it's in an area that that's. You know, way below, way below the nine hundred fifty foot limit, it's, it's totally flat, there's established runoff, blah, blah, blah. If they sit in there and tell us that the town doesn't need to review it anymore, it doesn't matter to me, anyway, if it's four lots or or twelve lots. The 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 town staff is saying that there's nothing questionable about this. And I think that's, you know, rather than trying to define it, I mean, because no matter how you define it.
It's something you're gonna miss one.
Well, someone's gonna argue that some.
Yeah, you're probably right, you're probably gonna miss one.
Great area, and argue they should be over here, and we're saying it should be over here. Town's gonna come, the town staff is gonna come forward with a recommendation. We listen to their recommendation, and then we either. Vote and say, no, we don't agree with you, we're gonna make the decision right here tonight, we can still do, do that, or we say, no. You know, Nate needs to look at this, Ray needs to look at it, whatever, and say, you're gonna need to come back.
Right, so maybe like in bullet point three, where it says, um, town staff will issue a memorandum and supporting documentation to the planning board that summarizes the scope and scale of the project. With the checklist, maybe we include that, whether further review is needed by department heads, or whether further review is needed for water or something, so we can then present to the planning board. Application is complete, here are areas of concern, or if there are no areas concerned, and then the planning board can make the decision at, at, you know. At the meeting, so you know, prior to the meeting, this is either gonna need more review, or town staff thinks it doesn't need any more review.
This would be put on, put this on the agenda for the uh first meeting in October for review. Take a note, it's on the calendar, and in other words, see how it works, I don't want it to just get forgotten.
Oh, you mean like to revisit this process, sure, that's. Yeah, I thought you meant like, Jim, you really don't want this to be.
Not speedily, I wanna put it in for six months.
No, I think the six months review process is fine, see if it's working or not.
I worked on one project, before the, before the project even built. The guy that's putting the project in, had their state pound women's agreement delineate everything, did they approve them, they had to put it on the map. It all set before you went to the, to the town for a minute. It's certainly been a lot of stuff that was stamped on it, that takes a lot of time, but now, but you can do that.
Well, and I think you see, you know, I know, you know, Jim made a comment about like, having the applicants spend engineering funds before it gets approved, but they're already doing that. They're already going through the AOT permit with, you know, with DES, they're already going through surveys and all, they're already spending money. They're already vesting themselves in this project before they even get approved, for the most part, for the bigger ones at least.
Just like in my woodyard, when I, I leveled it off some year, about twenty-five, thirty years ago. And the DES came over, went over my, oh, yeah, what I delineated, what I could do without, if that's what you meant to do it.
If you need wetlands.
Well, they created a wetland, and they put ninety-three in, it wasn't there before.
Yeah.
You know what they told me? Oh, you put a cover across, and then I go, you guys get ready to put a cover across, but it's something you created.
Really, we ought to be careful about doing it on a local level.
But I went to, I went to the DES.
Yep.
Certainly, wetland board, came in, opened the whole property, blah, 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 which takes a hour to go, or they have to go through a special.
Yeah.
Permit, they, they didn't give you a time document, it just opened it up by the year, and we'll back you up, nowadays that doesn't work, you had one document.
Yeah, well, it's good you did that.
Do we, do we need to vote on this? Because we do.
Are we ready to, so you won't have any further questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we vote on accepting this process for subdivision site plan and review applications. Uh with 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 caveat that it has a six-month review. And that it, that it lists a timeline for applicants. And that, um, what would you, what did you say about number three, now, Karina?
That, uh including, uh including, when the, when the town staff issues a memorandum summarizing the scope and the sale of the project, will also. Uh define whether we think it needs further review by town departments, or if it.
You'll re- you'll recommend.
Right.
Right.
Further review.
Further review, if.
If necessary, yeah.
Okay.
So, so tho- those three things.
What was it, I did the.
Six-month review.
Oh, six-month.
That way they don't drop ball on.
Yeah, okay.
Timeline and what Karina said.
Town staff recommendation.
Yeah, so I'll make that motion.
This is probably, you're probably gonna love it, what you do. In a couple of weeks, I have to go talk to the site, uh, Donkey Council, and they, I'll probably, I'm gonna ask them, they have, they do. Peasmeal.
Per diem.
Petition, I mean, uh.
I'm just asking, do they provide technical services for the members?
Say what they charged it.
Yeah.
Well, we get Katrina, not Katrina, but.
Oh, Sandrine.
Sandrine, we had, uh, Kalowski was having town manager over in Maine right now. And we had, uh, what was the lady over, Franconia? Yeah. Tell you stories about that one.
I think those of us in the community should find out how it's working, get the feedback. Just, you know. Get the feedback from the people that are actually working with the staff, see what they say. So you seconded it?
Yep.
All in favor? I'm gonna oppose, all in agreement, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
We wanna talk about, um, South Peak.
We wanna talk about South Peak, the master plan, so, um. So I, uh, watched a piece and pieces, or as much as I could at the planning, the last planning board meeting, I know it was relatively wrong, and I know, um. The, uh, a good chunk of the discussion, um, fell upon, or was, uh, was focused on the master plan. The master plan of South Peak, yeah, so, um, I've, uh. Spoken with, uh, town council about what we can and can't do in regards to the master plan. And how we think, what we think is the best project moving forward, and I think to eliminate, um. Every single time an application comes forward, the discussion on what are we basing this off of. I think it would behoove the planning board, and I also think it would behoove the developer to establish what we are using as a master plan. So Carol has gone through all of our documents and provided, I won't grab a mile, but she's provided what she believes to be. The original two thousand and six master plan, it's this maps. Figure maps, it has an appendix B, which is a traffic and site assessment study. There's also an appendix.
It's in here.
Standing. And then. So, there's a lot of documentation of what was the master plan, we've also gone through the development agreements, and in. All of the development agreements, they reference that master plan. So, I think the planning board needs to decide, are we going to hold them to this twenty-year-old master plan? Or should we ask the developer, and I think you already have, but I think maybe we need to be a little bit more forceful to. Present a new master plan, or revise master plan, that identifies. What we have there now and some of what he envisions in the future, and it is a living document, it's going to change as development changes up there. But I think if you're basing your current approvals off that plan, they don't coincide, they don't go together. So I think, and I've spoken to town council about this, and town council is willing to reach out to the developers' council. And kind of try to work through this to establish a master plan, or a revised master plan. That could be agreeable to both the planning board and also the developer, to establish a baseline. For all future project approvals at South. So I guess.
You say future, are you talking future as in next year, are we talking from?
I'm talking about any new application that comes forward.
Yeah, this is quite old, I mean, to be working on this.
Well, it's not accurate.
Yeah, it's not accurate at all, I think maybe if we could get them to create like a five-year plan. Every five years, and if they modify from that, then they should do it accordingly.
Our ordinance is to speak pretty specifically to master plans and what's required. What they don't speak to is how often they're supposed to be updated, that's up to the planning board. But, I mean, if we take a look at, for instance, there's, there's a ton of information that, that was. That doesn't meet it, I mean, it is, it's everything from, take open space. Right, and 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 that's one thing we can talk about tonight, is that. The open space, according to our ordinances, has just a ton of regulation about open space. The master plan has open space, it, it's a master plan of South Peak. That open space is supposed to be beaded, it's actually supposed to have a D, it's supposed to have a plan as. As part of the master plan, it's supposed to be as big as that shows, that shows the dedicated open space to it. And it's not that they wait till, you wait till the end, there's things that you take out of open, out of the plan, like, you know, uh, streams and. And and sometimes the, um, stormwater protection, those areas come out of it, so, I mean, there's a lot.
What do you mean, like stormwater, you mean like a retention pond or something like that?
Yeah, there's, there's something else, and it's really important to to delineate that, that, that open space. For instance, we don't know, I don't know, I don't, again, we don't hear, I don't know. Where is the open space dedicated at for everything that they built today? I don't know. And if you take a look at the, the plan that was submitted, was for the fireside, it doesn't meet the, it doesn't meet the requirement. So that, so they were supposed to be having some around twelve acres, based on what they're, they're putting forth for their unit. Their density, if you take a look at the master plan, it shows low density, and the fireside is high density. So I mean, and everything that they talk about is, everything that's based upon, from the subdivision ordinance to the, to the site plan review, to the land use. All says, and and to the developer agreements, like Karina said, it's all based on the master plan. The master plan was also made in regards to our ordinances, if you look on the master plan, there's. In regards to our ordinances, if you look on the master plan, there's questions. And they, they, they detail the, um, ordinance at the time, I gave Carol a copy of the two thousand and five. Just so you know, the, the, in two thousand and five, our land use plan ordinance was, was forty. Forty something pages and today it's a hundred and some, so it's grown since two thousand and five by a lot, but anyway. They all, they all refer to. The master plan and, and like I said, in that master plan that they. There's questions about it, and it, it details, there's a lot of detail in there, but. The, the master plan can't just say this is low density, and then the developer is going to say, we want to put high density in it. Because then you're gonna start asking the questions about, okay, where's the parking? One thing I learned when I looked at the master plan from before was. The master plan dictates that for South Peak. That, that they need two parking spaces per, per unit. One of them, according to the master plan, can be considered in the garage. Because I remember you telling me that they could be, I didn't know that, but it, it says in, in the master plan that it could be considered there. So, that's the whole thing.
How do you think you matched, like, you want to say something, I just have a question, did. Where does it say that the, um, open space has to be specified in, in a separate G, is that in the master?
It's in the land use ordinance.
And it's. Yes.
One at a time, yeah.
It's, um.
Wait, what, is it in the land use ordinance?
It's in the land you plan ordinance.
Okay.
And it's the same, it's, it's the same.
Thousand and six when it was approved.
It's the same as, it, it was the same in two thousand and five as it was in the, or two thousand and twenty two once, because I have copies of both of them.
That's most.
It says, open space, learning development shall be deeded as open space in perpetuity. So all open space is supposed to be, um, it's supposed to be left in this natural state. Um, or shared improved as usable recreational area, so, so you can do that, but you can look up. There's just a ton in here about open spaces, and, you know. You can't wait till the end, it's supposed to be. By the subdivision, by the, by their request, whatever, whatever development is in, because you don't want to wait till the last thing. I mean, one of the questions Carol asked, just related to another project over here and, and, uh.
Fourth street.
Fourth street. Remember that we talked about they were gonna sell that, they were gonna have an auction or whatever they were gonna sell?
Yeah.
Well, Carol's question was, well, what if they're auctioning off pieces of property and someone buys it? But it was considered to be part of the open space for the development. You don't know that because you don't know what was deeded for open space. And they can use brooks and they can use recreational area and stuff like that.
And these ski trails?
Ski trails can be used. But. You have to own those ski trails as part of the development.
Right.
Right, but, but like over here, the, the brook, the waftway, pathway along the river. That could be used. Things like that can be used, you can't use, there's a whole list of things in here. And I remember Carol giving all the stuff I had.
I think so, yeah. And I think you can be flexible with the developers, right? I think you can be flexible, I think you can say. These, where you designate the open space, where you designate the six acres that needs to be associated with this subdivision. You could potentially move somewhere else in parcel, right? Could move over down here, could move over down here. But you have to earmark six acres somewhere, and that needs to be presented maybe in a little shaded area on the plan, so we can see it, and.
That's why.
You know, it's supposed to be deeded, but I think you could deed it as the development kind of. Progresses further along, you know, because.
Trying to talk with their land in perpetuity.
It's, it, it's just a calculation, if they have more open space than they need for a four to one unit development, then. Part of that comes out of that calculation, so you have to make a note, part of that comes out of that calculation, but. Uh, you know, in, in the subdivision regulations, it says the same thing.
Yeah.
Um. Areas of open space have sufficient legal restrictions recorded in towns' land records to assure permanence of such. Permanence of use as open space. I mean, and then subdivision also says. Means there is a land dedicated without roads, buildings, uh, et cetera, family growing, so it goes on, it goes on to tell you, you know.
So. I mean, it says permanent, so I mean, that basically means a development, right, so those, that land is gone. But I mean, once, so I mean, once they sign away.
And how can you share? And one of the questions I had was a lot like when he came in for South Peak. And he said, oh, we found some more places that we, we can put, remember when he said he wanted to put those other? That could have been, I don't know, it could have been. Open space from past times, we don't know. Why wouldn't somebody else want to put those lots there, you know, because it seemed to make sense that they would want to put them?
Me just, just, I don't remember them ever coming in with a project where they showed deeded open space.
Well.
I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I'm just.
But that's all part of the fifteen thousand foot requirement.
Yeah, so you, yeah, but you're saying open space more so for cluster development with lots of less than fifteen, are you saying if I have fifteen thousand square feet per lot? I have to deed open space on top of that?
No, no.
Okay. If I put the lot as less. Say a lot.
So if you take, if, if you take fireside. And the calculations on fireside were.
And we can talk about this because it's already happened, so let's not, we're not talking any pending application. Right, I, I guess. So let's say the fireside needed whatever, X acres short of open space, and they, they said, okay, we're gonna use this ski trail right here. With all these open spaces, so that's gonna be fireside's open space.
It could be.
Let's say, five years from now. For some reason, they're not gonna use that as a ski trail, they want a, a, a road needs to go in there, or whatever.
It needs to be replaced.
Can, can, can they replace that over here?
Yes.
Okay, now, do they have to deed this now, or can they wait till the end where we, we take all these open spaces?
We would. We should change our ordinance to, I, I would agree with you.
I.
But I think our ordinance should say that if you. If you modify any open space, that it has to be replaced with the same and kind.
Or upon substantial depletion or something.
But I give you the, you know. Again, fireside, we already went over fireside, but. If you take a look at fireside. There's six point three two acres there. That's two hundred seventy five thousand, five hundred and twelve square feet. You can only build on seventy percent of that. So that's a hundred ninety two thousand, eight hundred and sixty five.
Well, it builds up eighty percent.
So if you take.
If it's residential, it's different.
It's seventy percent according to our ordinance. If you take the twenty four, I mean, the twelve duplexes. Two single family units they've got there and five triplexes. Times the fifteen thousand for the single units, times fifteen thousand for the triplex units. And a twenty two five for the duplex, come up with five hundred and twenty five thousand square feet. So they have a deficiency of. Of about.
Six acres, a cake.
Six acres, so. We need, we should be asking them now. Where's six a- acres? So, one of the questions I think we, well, we can't just blow it off, because. We gotta ask them as part of that, because it, it was supposed to be part of the man, it's part of the master plan that they do that, it's deeded, it's in the master.
It's part of the updated master plan.
But, right.
On show.
Correct.
If we had the original documents. With the development agreement. It showed some piece of land, fifteen acres, it would never be developed, that can, that can be transferred to it. Can, can the terrain, brooks, well. And, but we don't have that map, we can't find where it is. Hasn't been recorded in April, the Mylar is not there, the Mylar is not here. And the other four copies, God knows where it is, so if something happened between, then we get a lot of information we don't have. A lot of this open space Paul talked about was on the original maps. That could be moved around a couple. Because like you said, a living document, a change. If you make, put in this fifty units in this table. May only be a forty, see on it, because of the terrain and, then you move it over here, but. For the overall plan, it, it backed out, it ended up unit to the whole concept.
Right, I just think we just need to recognize the open space and identify it so we can keep track of it, and I think by doing that. During the application process, when they come in for their fireside, we say, okay, you got, like Paul said. Where are your six acres? Put them somewhere so we can see them, so they're, so land is earmarked. And whether that land moves from the northeast corner to the southeast corner, or where it moves to central, we at least know that six acres is accounted for. Because when it's all said and done, there's gonna be roads, there's gonna be sidewalks, there's gonna be utilities, there's gonna be swimming pools, there's gonna be a lot of stuff. That takes up acreage, that's not included in open space. That they're gonna have to factor in at some point, and we don't want them getting to the end of this project or getting to the end of development and. Wanting to put up something, and they don't have enough open space to do so, or they're gonna have to cut corners or create a variance or do something because. They under calculated, and I think it just behooves, like I said, both the developer, developer and the planning board to just make sure. That it's addressed and that we see the bigger picture, we're, we're looking at individual pieces of the puzzle, right? But we're not looking at the whole picture, and I think we just need to kind of step away and look at the little individual pieces, but also look at the whole.
And I mean, for instance, Karina sets up on sidewalks, if you look in the master plan. It says in there that all of the roads, that they're gonna have sidewalks, well, there's not a sidewalk over there. So, yeah, it. There, there's been some thing, and again, it's the same.
Though, I mean, it's a single family house lots.
All it really is, is that. It, it hasn't been revisited for seventeen years. And. It, it's time, and I think we just need to go to the developer and say, I don't think we should approve anything more. Until the master plan is updated.
A sidewalk.
Like you said, you get fifty more.
If he wants to take sidewalks on the master plan, that's it, but as long as everybody's in agreement with it, then that's okay. But I mean, the, the other thing I want to.
Potential pending, ten, potential pending application.
But, but one of the things we've done with this fireside approval. Is that because it said in the master plan, it said it was low density. So, everybody assumed, if anyone saw that when they bought. They thought that, that they, it was gonna be individual house lots, so there might be six individual house lots there. If you had two, two cars per house lot, that's twelve cars coming out of there. Now there's forty one units, who cares, there's eighty four coming out of there. So people on the other side of the road, maybe they're happy, maybe they're not, but what you do when you make, what, what you do is you just bring everything out to the open, so everybody knows. You know, I'll bet those people up there that are on the other side of that fireside development, I'll bet they don't know that there's gonna be all those cars, that's gonna be forty one, and they're gonna be coming. It's gonna be, they might not be happy with it, I don't know, because they, they might have bought thinking, this is just gonna be a small residential neighborhood, and now guess what, we got forty one units beside us. So, that's why you need, it's so important for the master plan to keep up, for us to keep up with them. To get the master plan, and, and I think what's happening here is that we're going so fast sometimes that. We just need to slow down a little bit, say, you know, we need, we, we need to get this updated, we got forty one units here. Find, find these six acres, tell us where the rest of your open space, the only deficiencies that I see. Is we don't know where the old open space is, we don't know where the new's open space is for, for fireside, and we need an updated master plan. Other than that, and on his updated master plan, he can show that that's high density. But, because he changed it.
Right. I mean, like, we're looking to get an inventory of what's there.
Right.
High brands of cake.
Right, exactly, can you have a question?
Yeah, the other red flag that came up to me is that the fact that this forty one unit development doesn't have any overflow parking within it. And he said it's gonna be down the road, I mean, is that gonna end abstractly?
He's good enough work. He's got enough work.
Which conditioned on, on providing packets.
He only needs two spaces, one can be in the garage.
Well, and I think that's something we ought to look at for our.
But I mean, the.
No one puts a car in the garage.
Can you?
Yeah, well, I'm saying. You don't want to scrape it off.
Managing. And I, I wonder if the town can, if we, um, part of it, I guess, can. Dictate that all these little subsidies within the master plan should have their own little parking area, you know, overflow parking within.
Well, that comes, that comes with site plan review, as we review the spaces, we can talk about that. That was included in fireside. Yeah, I mean, the, in front of each unit was whatever, the two space on. But then, but then, like, along, um.
One of those little centers.
The center section has three, three or four parking spots here, there was another one that had like a little area with another, I don't know, three or four, so there was on. I'm gonna say off, off of the, it was additional parking beside the two lots, the two spaces in front of each unit.
It was right, we did it more, we didn't, we, we didn't make it for that, yeah.
It was already in.
It was in there, but it just didn't.
You know, part of the reason I say that.
The terrorists have already put in, it'll be a two in the building.
Part of the reason that I say that we gotta, that we should make that. Determination that, you know, we should hold off on any further. Um, subdivision approvals is because.
Oh.
Look.
Let, let's not get too far ahead of ourselves.
I'm not talking about, okay, I'm not talking about these specific, I'm talking about in general. It's because. Mark Bogosian said that he was going to have. A new master plan at the site plan review meeting in our last meeting. The guy from, or, or Co-.
Correct.
Horizon. Said he'd bring in a plan that shows the existing master plan with an overlay of what's been done already, including in his proposal, so. And, and this was in, you know, in January. So. And, and we've talked to him about that before. I think what's happening is. It's just he wants to sell property, and I can't blame the guy, but we need stuff to be updated. And I'm sorry that he's the third or fourth developer, no one else updated it before him, but. I think we need to get him to do that before we go any further. He's got, if you think about what he's building, what he's got for approvals, he's got it. All along the river already, both sides, both sides of that lower road. He's got this forty one unit one, he's got the six unit one that's up just beside that, so there's plenty of, there's plenty of development that can be had, and. If you took a look at that stuff over there. He really could just take that and revise it, it, it shouldn't take. It shouldn't take Horizons or someone a very long time to take that stuff, I don't think, to you. And, 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 and revise it to be. Be what Karina said was a work in progress, but a more updated work in progress, you know, so. And, and if you, and if you say, and if you say you're not gonna have any, give any more approvals, it gives them a reason to get it done.
Well, I think in the future, without an updated, agreed upon master plan that the board is okay with and that Mark's okay with. You would have to base all your decisions off that plan.
Do we have everything that I'm citing, when you were speaking, is everything that's over there?
Well, some of it, some of like the, like the traffic studies, but like there are hundreds and hundreds of pages.
So you're doing things, and I'm like, I don't think I have that.
Yeah, no, for, for the most part, anything that was. Six, ten pages, you know, we, we copied for you, it's in these packets, um, but some of those bigger binders, we were ripping out.
And, and the other thing is that, that bigger plan that's over there.
Yeah.
Is much easier to read, much easier to get in here, but when I looked in here, I had a hard time seeing it.
Okay, so let's, let's get back to where we started, so. Basically, our attorney is gonna recap, reach out to, um. Uh, South Peak's attorney. Let's see if they can work out something for an updated master plan.
I, I, I like that, does Ray have any comments on the master plan? Because he's the one that sometimes deals with that, so. Just ask him.
I'm here.
You have any comments on whether, about this updating of the master plan?
I, yeah, I think, I, I, Paul, I concur with, um. All, all your comments relative to, and Karina's about having a master plan. That, you know, that, basically where you want to get to is you want to get a shared understanding between yourselves and the developer as to what's happening. And, you know, you talked earlier in your conversation about expediting reviews. You'll go a long way to expediting reviews. When you have that shared understanding, so whether. The planning board says we're gonna abide by the master plan that's sitting on the drafting table on the other side of the room from you. Or whether you're going to, um. And I would recommend that you strongly consider. If you're gonna revise that master plan on the other side of the table, that you. That you fully bet it. Approve it. And that you update the development agreement and make reference to it. That way. Five years from now, people can pull out these documents and there won't be. You know, any question, or there won't be the questions that we currently have about, you know, what was envisioned back in two thousand and six? Because my read of the development agreement. And my read of the master plan is that. I agree with Karina that the development agreement references. That the development will proceed in accordance with the master plan, and that master plan on the other side of the room. Is dated pretty much around the same time, within months of each other, that development agreement. So my interpretation as your consulting engineer is that that's the basis of. Reviewing a fireside or a six lot subdivision. Um. I just, I agree, I couldn't agree more with Karina that you really need to have agreement and a shared understanding with the developer as to what you're. Going to ultimately approve. Because what they are doing, they are coming before you with these, what they just, what. The gentleman from Horizons, John, had indicated was that it's just a forty one unit. Um. Multi-unit development, that's all it is, it's just a small thing, it's not a small thing, because small things add up to big, big things if they continue on. With this kind of process. So typically what, in the planning boards that we deal with. Typically, a planning board won't approve anything unless they see the complete build out. Typically, a planning board won't approve anything unless they see the complete build out. Of what, of the proposal. And they vote on the complete build out of the proposal, and the developer can phase it however they wanna phase it. But the developer can't come in and say, here's phase one. Get approval, here's phase two, get approval. Most communities don't do their planning that way. They require that, and the state is the same way. They don't, they don't allow phasing. You have to show them, like under an AOT, you have to show them what the full build out is. Before they would give approval on phase one of that build out. So that's what the master plan will do for you. It'll give you that benchmark. Um, for your decision making going forward when they come to the table with these individual subdivisions.
But, but we know. Hey Ray, we do know what the build out is. It's a thousand and eighteen units. So we know what that build out is. But I think if, when they address the master plan, I agree with you. I mean, the, the town's already done the work. What was it? Just two years ago, you revised that developer agreement, right?
Basically, we can, yes.
Basically, that was, we confirmed.
Existing two thousand and six development.
Right, because there was another one, two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen was the confirmation.
Confirmation, right. But, I mean, I think, you know, it'll give me a chance to look at everything and update it, from the water tank. To the basis of design, I mean, so we can make one complete package. If they want. If they wanna say that once the tanks end, that they wanna be able to put five bedrooms in. Then that doesn't matter, because that's OJ says, you're working off the complete thing, and the tank's already in. So. While I have concerns about the tank, and I do have big concerns about the tank. I think it gives them a chance to do that. And if you look at the master plan, the big copies of the master plan. It shows the amenities. There's probably not one of those amenities that's gonna be over there. So, I mean, it's changed in that regard too. You know, so the densities have changed, the amenities have changed.
So they're willing to, you know, you know, I mean, why don't we just see what they can work out and then they'll bring it back to the board? I mean, that's what, that's what Corina was saying.
I think you gotta be careful. If you put two lawyers, if you put two lawyers in a room, you might not get what the people that are over there want.
Well, I think, I think, I think the lawyer, uh, town council has a working relationship with. South Peak Development's town council. They work on other projects together in other communities. So I think they have a kind of friendly professional where he offered to reach out to say, hey. I think it would help both.
When you say he, you mean our attorney?
Our attorney.
Yeah.
Our attorney, attorney, you know, uh, uh, Jason Dennis would reach out to, you know, South Peak developer's attorney and just say. I think it would behoove both of our clients. And to not have to go through the rigmarole of debating on which master plan we're using, or which variation we're using, or which draft we're using. If we could just come together. And find a middle ground, a common ground, where they present something to the planning board, and the planning board accepts it as this is our baseline. And I, and I guarantee, they probably have a lot of that already completed. They just haven't presented it to the board. And I think that's what we need. And, and again, even if it changes, even it's a living document, even if it, in six months from now, two years from now, three years from now, they decide. Okay, we wanna change the density in this area, we wanna move this, we wanna do that. You, we can have another revision, we can have a master plan revision. But I think working off one from two thousand and six. I- i- is just causing more issues than it is.
I mean, it's not building anything in importance, but.
You're not building anything. So it's not even, exactly.
I mean.
So as part of this revision. Would they, would we have a public hearing on the revised ones that? Owners that are over there, if there's gonna be any changes, they might have an opportunity to say. Uh, we don't want like this there, we don't wanna force stable here, we don't, you know what I mean? Do, do they get an opportunity or not?
But I mean, I would think, you know, that. As the pages come in for their approval, that would be the time for the bodies to. I mean, certainly we'll take input from the public.
Well, we're already making changes. We made quite a bit. This, this fireside development was quite a change from what the original was.
And I understand what you're saying, we have to, we have to start somewhere.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Do you know who the original designer of the master plan and mass were? They drew them out. Is it the original ones?
Yeah.
Do they have any copies of the original drawings that they have from the first time they sent that?
They do, they have.
Yeah, so I'm saying.
Drawings of what?
Excuse me, it was probably Proven. Was it Proven and Lober back then?
It was delineated on the original map to record, sort of the recorded table, but nobody could find it.
Well, I, I, I think it was Horizons, and I think they're still using Horizons, so it should be relatively evil to.
Hold that, give the big one so we can overlay it, what we're working with now.
Horizon said the other night when they were here, they had. That. Right there.
Yeah.
But they don't have, yeah, I don't know, I don't know what they get over there, as far as the big maps, or if they have the. The addendums to it, or if they have the, and, and the traffic plan was an addendum, so. Just by virtue of bringing it all together to let everybody, they may not, not even know, because the, uh, the guy that was here said. Do you think those requirements were there back when this was approved? Well, now, we got to two thousand and five, we know they were. They're almost word for word on density, on things like that, so it was the same thing.
They're saying it, they drew the mile line, the mile was a good size.
Maybe we really need to look forward and not worry about trying to find something from two thousand and six, you know. Get a new document that, that's more accurate.
And I think what we, we need to do ourselves for the town. Is that we should put, there should be a date or whatever it is, a year. Every three years, five years that you go and update it, so you don't. You don't wait again to get seventeen years behind you and say, oh, no, we won't do it. So, I mean, we, we should look at that too and say.
Or so, I mean, updated as it changes, I mean, nothing changes, I don't think.
Yeah, that's what I would agree with.
Well, it just costs them more money. I was just thinking that we might be able to make them. A three-year, a five-year thing, so it didn't cost them so much. If they made changes every year, and you made them update their master plan, it'd get pretty expensive, but if you said. I don't like.
I bet you they're changing it on their end anyways, you know, I mean, I, I bet you when they're making changes as they go along, they're changing it on their end anyways. They're changing it on the big picture. They're not doing it now.
They don't have an idea what they.
You think so?
We're going, coming in as we go.
I mean, he doesn't even know if he's gonna build all of fireside, he's gonna build the lower one and wait and see how they sell before he.
Yeah, I think he has a little bit more of an idea. And I do, I do. But I think it's fair to have them updated as they make changes. I do.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it.
Markos didn't go over so well, that's why they started building more single-family homes. Yeah. Steve.
Ray was saying though, the last meeting I was sitting here thinking, we got three cups with the ball under one of them. Where's the ball? This is kind of what was happening. I don't know what cup the ball's under right now.
But I think we gotta be able to tell them. You know, look, we need that before you come in for anymore, because we don't, we don't have a characteristic here, we just don't. And it's not like we're stopping them because they've got a ton of they can build. So, and they can, they're a big company, they should be able to revise what. Pretty easy.
Oh, I don't think you need to tell them you're not gonna prove anything that comes forward. I think you tell them whatever, whatever comes forward, you're gonna base it off of. That plan. And I think that will put a little bit of fire underneath them, because I don't think they want their reviews based on that.
We have a big problem with enforcement, and it's better off to get that stuff nailed before they do anything.
Yeah.
I think it's just to be cleaner moving forward if we're all on the same page.
Right, but I like your approach, that we're not sitting here, you have to, you have to plan. It's, that's the master plan we're going by. So, so if you guys stick with that. You do need sidewalks, you, you do need. Uh, to show the, uh, open space, you, you do need to follow that master plan. Um, and if you're building condos in, in low-density areas. That, that doesn't fit the master.
So you're not gonna be able to build them now, even though we approved them?
Well, no, whatever's been approved has been approved. I think moving forward.
No, I, I think that's a fair way to do it, like. You know.
Right, we're not denying you anything.
Show us the, um, food, something, something here.
Should we readdress the, the traffic flow?
That, that is addressed in the current management.
That too, or do it every couple of years, because we know the traffic flow has changed a lot.
Well, let me change the master plan, they can update everything else.
I mean, but that's a good point. Do, do we insist that they do a whole move? I mean, it's not a mistake, you're not spending money. I mean, what is Peron gonna, gonna charge?
And they have to do it on the weekend on winter season.
They don't have. If you're talking about the traffic on Main Street, that's Little Mount, that's not South Peak. If you're talking about South Peak, that's South Peak. And the DOT, they don't care either. I mean, when someone comes on, they'll make them do a study. Remember that, they said, anybody else that puts anything on, on Main Street, they get to do a study. So, I mean, it's just like the town, when, when we say. You have to do a water and sewer analysis, you know, so that's, that's the way it goes, you know?
We put it in them to prove that they can, their sewer will flow downhill.
My system works fine, so you show that you're.
And it's the same thing with traffic. You're gonna build all this, show us that what you're building isn't gonna screw up traffic everywhere. Same type of analogy, you know, but.
I believe the state is, we're in the requirement now, anything that is off of Main Street.
Anything new, yeah.
Anything new, right. They, it goes to DOT.
Yeah, they can notice it.
Yeah, yeah, we don't issue curb.
But they don't have a- anything like, South Peak doesn't need to go to DOT, because it's not anything new.
Believe that this, I don't wanna say grandfather, this has been approved for two thousand and eighteen.
For a thousand and eighteen units, right. I think they would argue that traffic for a thousand and eighteen units is gonna be the same, whether it's high density or low density.
They do say in there that as phases come on. As new phases are, uh, approved. That the town has the ability to request somewhere in there. Town has the ability to request updates on traffic. And, and to suggest changes or anything that they may wanna do. That's somewhere in there.
But I like the idea of having to redo it, because even just the sidewalk issue alone, just.
I just think that, you know, a- a- and OJ, Corina, I, I'm not trying to be hard on him, but. It's just, you know, I think we gotta protect the town, I think we gotta do the characteristic thing once. And say, look, you gotta hit this, and they'll get it to you. I don't think it's gonna take them long. They'll get it to you, because they won't get it to you. And then the town will have it. You know, and we don't have to fight them for it. Every, every time they come in, we don't have to fight them for it, or say. Because then we're gonna be pouring through all of that stuff all the time for every application they have. But if they make their. If, if we say, look. We're not gonna accept any more applications until you revise that, then we'll be able, they revise that, then whatever applications come in, we'll be prepared.
I don't think we can do that. We have a master plan, we have something that's already been approved.
But we don't know that that's a man.
Well, I, I think that's our best get. Like you said, we were basing that off of because the D is the same, and then everything, it's appendix A, B, and C. I think. They would argue that you can't, and I think our attorneys would say the same. We can't deny it. They have a master plan that's already been accepted, that's already been approved. We have ninety percent of the documentation, or what we believe to be ninety percent of the documentation. I don't think we can deny an application. I think we either need to base it off that. Or we base it on something new that they produce.
So, appendix A and B, those are multi-pages, that's why they're not.
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's, I already said.
There's multiple, and we'll leave it all there, so you guys can use it at future meetings if you need to or whatnot for now, um. But I think it's gotta be either or. Either you produce something new. Or we're going off of two thousand. And let them decide what they wanna do, because.
Well, maybe what we should tell them is, by the way, if we were using that, you wouldn't have got the fireside thing, because it didn't meet your.
Well, now that we've addressed this as a board, and the board's all heard the concerns, and we've all kind of understand where we stand moving forward. I mean, they're gonna monopolize the planning board's time for the next five years, most likely, right? They're gonna be the majority of applications that come forward. So I think we get this in the blood now, and we say, which one are you using? So we can establish a baseline, and that's how we move forward. And if we tell them that, they may say. Okay, we'll use this one, and we'll rearrange our plans, but, or they may say, okay, we don't wanna use this one. We'll get you the plan.
Yeah, I, I.
I'm fine, I don't, don't wanna rock the boat too much, so. As long as we get one, that's what I'm looking for.
Or, or we go back to that one and say, show us the sidewalks, show us.
Everything, the densities.
Density.
And again, the, the, the block off.
Open space.
Open space. I mean, I think that's gonna be easy, because all of the ski trails are open space, so that's gonna cover, you know.
But that doesn't, but ski trails aren't owned by the developer, so they, they can't use it. They better use it only within their.
What's their land.
Don't know who owns, I mean, it's on, it's on their, it's on their deed and property.
But the three hundred and eleven acres.
It might be easements on their property, those ski trails.
They, uh, they do show a lot of common area, green space stuff, I think they think that's pretty important to them. I think they'd be all right in that department.
I, I mean, I think so too, but I think the ski trail's gonna, gonna count as green space. I think it's gonna have an over.
But it's gotta be in that three hundred and eleven acres.
Yeah, yeah, right, right. So, so once you hit the forest line, now those ski trails. But from the forest service line down on their property. I would say it should be counted as green space.
I think it is, I think it would.
Is that part of that three hundred and eleven acres, the four, that three hundred and eleven acres goes up to the forest service boundary? I thought Loon owned up to the forest service boundary.
Well, like, do in some spots.
That's where you get, right, because I know Loon owns, like, over, over on the main part of the mountain. Loon owns up to the forest service boundary.
On the main part of the mountain.
And where there's developments like in Beechwood. Loon does know any of that, but Beechwood, some of the houses go up to the forest service boundary, but I think, yeah, we. I really didn't pay attention.
I believe when send that bucket, brought it up to the board, we were.
To show us.
Yeah, it's up to them to figure that out. And if it's still, and they wanna use it as open space. Perfect.
Then, then I need the requirement.
Then I need the requirement. But I, but I, like I said, I, I still think it's important to track it, and how much do they have, you know, just so we know.
It's waiting either them or I'm playing the shell game.
We have anything else on this? So there's no need for non-public discussion.
So I'm okay to go to town council and say you're, you can reach out to.
Yeah.
Attorney Lit and get that following.
Yeah, they might not do anything.
They might not do it. Right. And they know it's either gonna be based on two thousand and six or something that they proposed.
Well. I still have a concern that. The planning board has the ability, and I, I believe the responsibility. To look at a developer and say, this has been seventeen years, we need an updated one. So I don't know that, you know what I mean? I think the planning board has a responsibility to, uh. To look at master plans like they do, the town looks at their own, I don't know how long it's been since we've done that, but. You know, the, the planning board has the responsibility to look at these things and say, it shouldn't be seventeen years old.
There's also another thing you could do. We can go to Concord. To the old Sheriff's Department office, downtown, down in Concord, Woodsville. And then give you a full-size map of the whole thing, photograph, run it from above. With a little nothing, you can overlay it on their map, if you look at it, delineate. How the map looks, where the silver space is. It was, it was stereoscopic, stereoscopic, landing, you can even tell the gray zone. Off the maps, that's what survey is doing, and survey the whole thing. The town does not have a big map of the whole place. I'll get several of my own that I went and bought.
What you thought on, on the. I mean, so, our board is to say that we have, we can, we should, we're supposed to upgrade this stuff, you know, I mean, uh.
I mean, let's see what, let's see what the result is in the.
Yeah, let's see what the result is.
Revisit it.
And they've already committed, and both in the, in the.
In the minutes.
In the minutes, I'm just, I think we have a responsibility as planning board to make sure that we don't have seventeen-year-old master plans out there that are not up to date. That's.
I think four degrees, I don't think anyone's disputing that.
But we, but then we can't say, if they say we're gonna use the two thousand and six, what do we say to them? That's my point. So, if we tell them they can use the two thousand and six, but yeah, we really wanna.
I don't think they can tell them that they can't use the two thousand and six.
We, we can ask them for an update.
We can ask them for an update. I don't think we can mandate or deny approval based on one, and I, I don't understand.
I would agree with that, I would agree with that, but I think we can ask for an update. I think it's our responsibility.
Well, I think that's what we're doing.
Okay. Songs are all on the same page.
Is there any other business?
I have one that, go ahead. I've been talking to several. So real things, it's kind of talking.
Yeah.
About on this. Putting in. People believe houses with needed rock walls. Okay, when I talked about it, remember? It's located, any definition. They facilitated, any definition, so it's rock wall, the rock wall is not a, not a structure to say is a house. They, they can't, right now they have to go to DBA and get a road for them. Even when it's. But we can simulate, we can facilitate this, because my. But when you facilitate this in a way, the record, they can come for the planning board, or they're going to DBA. If they have engineering spec for them. Insurance, and they probably put in, for the meat and setback. The way we now, each time they do this, they have to go to the, the DBA to get a.
You mean, like, if they're gonna put a rock wall within the setback?
Yes.
And it's never been the case, only when we started defining a rock wall as a structure, then we, we ran into this issue, I mean. Previously, we decided, you know, classified it as land crap.
We can change that on our own. We just get it ready for the next town meeting, I don't know if we need to go to town meeting, do it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
There's one we don't have.
You make a change like this legally, if you present it, you have to have a public hearing for the people in town to listen to it. And it becomes, if it's more stringent. Well, it's fine, you make it more stringent, they'll come to town meeting, but if less stringent, it can't be changed until you go to town meeting, they have to be sent it back to. To the less treated ones.
Juan, you're not talking about any changes in regards to, like, the retaining wall regulations, where they have to be engineered, if they're over four feet, just essentially the setback.
And you put the kind of caving wall.
Yes, a lot of them.
And then either that, or they have to put in what they call a. The sheeting, you know, until I go in, the ground. Three quarters steel, or they don't do that, I see that the other day, and looked.
By where the aguas, they've got either a church or something right there, or a bank, and they've got pylons gone instead of a, or a ball wall, it doesn't really look that bad.
It's a lot deeper, actually, built a piece of land.
I mean, it's, they just throw those in, fill it up full of dirt, built it.
With a ready machine, drive a pony in about most, fifteen minutes.
You have something?
Yeah, I, I wanted to bring something up, first of all, I think this type of work session is very helpful. Um, sometimes I think the board, this board is only about looking at, at subdivisions and site plans and approving or not approving. And, and, um, I have some ideas of things that I'd like the board to discuss, and one thing, and. I'm gonna repeat what Joe said, because the thing is important, is that if we, let's say, adopt a, or recommend the adoption of a new ordinance. And it's stricter than what is in place now, we can enforce that up until town meeting. Then town meeting votes, assume they adopt it, of course, that we, that, you know, can enforce it forever, if they don't adopt it, it gets turned down. Okay, then, then you're back to the old thing, whatever, um, but that allows us to, to. Like, next month, let's say in May, we.
Test run.
We, we have a, an ordinance that we have approved and wanna put in place, from May until March.
It should, it should. Only be like six months before the town meeting, I mean, you couldn't like have. Town meeting one day, and then adopt and propose an ordinance.
Big loss that you can have a town meeting anytime you want, especially.
Courts all.
I can look into that and see if there's any.
I don't know either, I mean, honestly, if, if, if we. I would like to put, put on the agenda at least once a month, a work session. I have nine proposals that are not quite ready to bring to you, about either ordinance changes or procedure changes. That I don't even wanna say I'm, I'm for, as much as I think we should talk about and get the opinion, because I think there's some things. That I've heard, or that we've seen applicants, um, like the stone wall issue, that, uh. Just makes sense, and I think that I've heard enough, uh, talk that, that the planning board would be able to do it, and I have other things I just wanna either. Uh, address and get off the table, like, like, I've heard so many people, like, why don't we have a building inspector, why don't we adopt the buildings, but. Let's us discuss that and say yes or no, so when someone asks me, I can say, planning board discussed that, we looked into it, and we voted no.
I mean, we're already. I hope many times, but.
Then, then, let's, let's vote to, to, to reject that as a proposal, if that's what we still wanna do, and I think there's pros and cons, and I'd like to get. Other outside opinions, namely Ray Bartman, to weigh in on that, and I don't wanna discuss this tonight, I'm just, this is one of. Nine things that I will talk, that I wanna bring up. Would it be feasible to put this on one meeting a month to spend an hour? Set aside an hour to, to talk about some of these things.
I think so.
Depends on the rest of the agenda.
Can't hurt.
Well, see, that's the thing, is that.
We don't have to put it on a regular Wednesday, we could have a meeting like we did tonight. On, on an off Wednesday, when we're not supposed to consider agenda items, just to do a work session, because then it's quick, you're in and out of here. You know, you're only talking, talking about that one topic, how long we been? So, I mean, you know, that way there, it's only, it's only just one additional meeting that you have, but it's to discuss those items and or. Changes to any ordinances that we wanna change, I mean, we, we've talked about the sign orders, we've talked about, but we talked about those during, during regular time. We probably should talk about those during that one meeting, extra meeting we have, then we won't bog down our meetings, because sometimes our meetings last too long. You know, the interest and the voice, that.
I mean, I'm not looking, honestly, I'm not looking for more meetings. But if we have to do that, I'm fine with it, but I think it could be an agenda item on, pick either the second Wednesday or the fourth Wednesday and say, okay. One hour of that meeting is, is to discuss whatever the next one is that we, we, this board choose to, to bring up. And, and, you know, kinda knock these off one at a time, there's a couple that I'd like to do, like, right off, so that, again, we can start enforcing them. Whenever the law allows us to, and it's six months before town meeting, so be it.
I mean, I'm not sure, but I believe.
I, I didn't know.
If we, if we have a light, light agenda, then that's fine, but if we have applicants that wanna come in, I don't think we wanna, you know what I mean?
If we have three big site plans on the agenda, do we tell people? We can't do it this night, because we're full, you have to come in next, the next meeting?
No.
No.
So we will theoretically stay here till midnight, if we have eight.
Of course, the third guy, third guy in the site plan is lucky.
Yeah, he's the luckiest guy. But I also think your meetings, where you only accept the application now, you will have some additional time. After the acceptance of the application, because you then won't be going through the. All right.
Can you distribute your ideas?
I, I, I was planning to, but I wasn't planning to have a meeting tonight. Um, so I'm hoping to have it ready for next week, and again, with the purpose that. I don't wanna discuss any of them next week, I wanna discuss a process of how we can fit these into planning board schedule.
How we start reviewing them.
And, and maybe even prioritize.
I mean, if anybody else has any, it would be the same thing.
And it doesn't have to be for next week, I mean, we, anyone can present at any time.
I mean, no one's ever been stopped from presenting anything.
I mean, if you distribute. Here, and we prioritize them, you know, to import them.
Yeah, um, I could even get there to, to Karina or Carol, try it to next. Meeting. I don't know if I can do it by this Friday, I'll probably work on it over the weekend, so.
Don't hurt.
It won't be, but it won't, it won't be a new box for. Review over the weekend, but I, I'll, I'll try to work on it over the weekend and get it ready for.
These, they go celebrate.
So.
This weekend, well, I'd say, I, I think it's a good idea to always look at stuff and update it. Whether it's an ordinance or a new idea, you know, it's.
Well, I think when you're always trying to put it in on your jam-packed meetings, it's always gonna kinda fall to the wayside, you know, because it doesn't take precedent.
But that's, that's the problem, we're gonna end up missing, you know, we'll, we'll come, you know, next February, when the deadline for our hearings are, it's like. Oh, we didn't have time for this, and this, and this, and this, let's do it once a month.
Oh, I agree.
They're gonna always say, take it off, because we have to.
If we have to, or we can do it first, and, and that third guy or seventh guy might be here till ten thirty at night, not that I wanna be. I've heard that, I've never been here that late for any meeting.
I'd say, I don't think anything.
Well, with the town, and I just, I don't know, I don't mean to jump off track, so I'll let you continue. But as far as like, I know that we have like, an approved allotment for like, water and sewer and all of that, but. I just, and I just mentioned it to a couple people, and it's not being calculated since the time when everything's grandfathered. Like, on a regular basis, and I wonder, like, what aspect of the town is keeping track of that, if any, and we should.
Well, we, we do a water analysis, I mean, I think Ray can touch base on that a little bit more than, um, probably articulate it better than I do, but we are keeping track of. All the dusted subdivisions and anything new that comes in, we are including them in, you know, like, let's say the, uh. New proposed, or the conceptual idea of the hotel next door, we're making them go through some sort of water analysis to ensure that we can. Water and sewer, so we can. Maintain, and, and that's on the developer, they're doing their own independent study to say, we've located, I think it's three points that we think. Might be over capacity, or might not meet our regulations, so they have to do their own independent water analysis with a vendor that. We recommend, um, that's familiar with our system, so that is being done on a project and project basis, or, you know, an annual basis. Am I correct with that, Ray?
Uh, yeah, so you, you were close, uh, so. Uh, so what we, what we do, depending upon the, the, the scope and scale and complexity of the project, we, um. We recommended a few years, maybe three years ago, that, that the town adopt a policy to do, um, particularly for your water and sewer system, do water. Do a sewer capacity analysis, so in the example of the, the Marriott Hotel, which is next door to town hall there. Um, we provided information to, uh, the consultant, we actually did a desktop study. Based on, uh, projected loadings from that development, and determined that there's three segments in your collection system on the town hall side of the street. That, based on that desktop study, that, um, that would be, uh, surcharge, basically, you don't have sufficient capacity to handle that hotel. So, we're now in discussions with the, um, applicant's consultant, to, um. We suggested that they consider putting meters in the ground and paying for a metering program. In order to actually calculate what the actual hydraulic load is in those pipelines. Because based on our desktop study, they shouldn't be connecting to your collection system, there is, there's a restriction there. So, we work with, to answer the question, uh, we work with the consultants that the applicants retain, to try to ascertain. Whether or not there's sufficient capacity to accommodate their development. And we benchmark that against the level of service that the town wishes to provide, um, those businesses. So, um, so it, we take a good, hard look at that, the other thing that we have done in the past. Uh, we did look at the wastewater treatment plant and the, uh, collection system in terms of an overall capacity issue. Um, and don't quote me on the number, but I think we determined, I think we did this, I don't know, OJ, you might remember, we might have done it two years ago, or maybe three years ago. The, the plan was basically at, at that point, at sixty-six percent capacity, but what we did in that calculation is we took, we took into the. Account, the town's, uh, policy that certain developments are fully vested in the water and wastewater system, meaning. You have to allocate a certain capacity to those developments, whether they're built or not, South Peak was one of those developments, for example. So, um, so we believe you have a, right now, you have a good handle on where you are capacity-wise. What's critical for you going forward is to periodically take a look at that. Uh, capacity analysis that we did, you know, two or three years ago. You know, based on more recent flow data, one of the issues that we have, and we have this in other communities, is. There's, there's really a disconnect because of the pandemic, that, you know, the hydraulic loadings that we see now. Um, now that we have some historical information on the, you know, the period of the pandemic, they're off from what the historical data, the dataset tells us, so. What we have done is, we, we look pre-pandemic, and then now we're starting to look at those flows more closely post-pandemic. Uh, because those are the normal flows that you're gonna see going forward, assuming we don't have a pandemic every five years, so, which I hope we don't. So, um, and I know that's a long answer, but I thought I'd give you the, you know, full background of, you know, um, you know, how the town has eyes on this particular issue. You're looking at it pretty closely, and, um, the, the key for you is to continue your due diligence and, and make sure you are. Keeping an eye on it as these new developments come online.
You know, uh, one of the things I think, thank you, that goes with that is the, these, uh, you talked about the master plan for South Peak. But, does it, you know, there's the town's master plan, and then there's, how about the other developments, how about. Forest Ridge and their master plan, or Loon's and their master plan, and how that affects the overall. Water, sewer, stuff like that, I know they have to do the study when they come in, but if we're trying to plan for stuff. It'd be nice to take a look at some of these bigger developments that are still developing, say, you know what? Loon's gonna put together a, a new lodge in, and that's gonna contribute. Ex want more bathrooms and more water uses and stuff, how's that gonna, does that affect anything the town have? You know, I mean, Forest Ridge, does that, there's still a ton of land up back there, I mean.
Well, that, 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 yeah, that, you know, typically what you do there is, again, that's kind of a, you know, fifty thousand foot elevation view of things. What you can do is, you can look at, as part of your town master planning effort, that's usually where that happens, so we do studies whereby. The town decides what their community wants to look like over the next, you know, twenty or thirty years, and so then you apply that vision. To the infrastructure to determine whether the infrastructure can handle that vision, and if they can't. Then you have to get, then you have to, you know, figure out, okay, so, you know, are we willing to make investments in infrastructure? Because a lot of communities now can't or won't, because, you know, when I started this business, you know, communities were getting ninety-five cents on the dollar from the federal government. To put these, you know, put these, to put the infrastructure in the ground, you don't get that anymore, so a lot of communities are now dialing it back and saying. You know what, maybe we should have onsite wastewater treatment for developments when they come in, because for us to, you know, provide sewer service. That's gonna be a ten million dollar project for a community, and we just don't have the revenue base to afford it.
Well, I think there's two things to look at when you do that, Ray, I think you can look at. The capital improvements plan, at, at least in a town like it, but we can also start to look at, um, impact fees for some developments, maybe.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I would definitely encourage you to do that.
South Peak, South Peak, there, according to the development agreement, I think there's no, no exaction fees other than. Uh, water, sewer tap fees, maybe there's something in there that says that there'll be no more exaction fees, there is something in there that says about sewer, did. Because of the sewer plan, if we had to build a new one, that the town has the ability to. Get something, some agreement with South Peak, I think, because of that.
Paid for them prior to, they were going to, you know, be willing to front them, prepay their sewer tap fees. But then get a credit for them and take them back as they.
But if the state all of a sudden came up tomorrow and said, that we needed a new sewer treatment plant down there, there's something. In there that says that the town can, that, along the lines of what you're saying, and I haven't paid attention.
How far ahead would they have to pay those, those fees? Would have to pay for a thousand units up front?
But I think if we're looking at.
I don't know, I don't know the exact length. Theory was that they were. Uh, aware of possible sewer issues, and would be willing to, to pay.
And I hope Mark didn't realize that, that that's in there, but I mean, I think, when we're looking at the CIP and, and. Impact fees, maybe that's one thing that we can look at as a board and say, you know what, maybe we should start to be. Diving into that, get the regulations ready, or make sure that we've got everything in place, so that when we, some of these places do come. You know, or, or we ask them, update their master plans as well, you know, so that we have an idea of what they're doing. I, I don't know if you could do an impact fee with a development that's currently here?
Well, this, first, first of all, Ray alluded to this, but there's, I believe it's five, called vested. Project, that, is it, it's five, right?
I believe, I believe it's five, and Forest Ridge is one of those five.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's Riverwalk, South Peak, Forest Ridge, Landing, around the rapids, yeah, okay? That's the five that I know of, um, so, so at full buildout of all five of those projects. Are included in that sixty-six percent of whatever you said. So, we, we're not at sixty-six percent today, but we're at sixty-six percent if all of those.
Full buildout.
Are built out, okay, so those are, I've been taking into that, that calculation. Um, you know, so when you, you know, you say, yeah, there's tons of land up at Forest Ridge, but they've been approved for, I forget what their number is, three hundred and something. Units, um, that's all. That's all starting that calculation.
Right, and the threshold and the threshold under your NFTs permit is eighty percent. So that 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 sixty-six. It's eighty percent minus sixty-six percent and that's that's what you real, that's what you have. What happens in your, what happens at eighty percent? Under your NFTs permit, you're required to pick up the phone. Basically, you're required to pick up the phone, call DES and say, we're at eighty percent and DES is gonna turn around and tell you. Okay, start planning for a a plant expansion. That's what's gonna happen.
Right, and we do take. Whatever you wanna call them, impact fee or extractions um. From all developers. There's, we have a bedroom fee.
Yes.
Water and sewer tap fee. So with with, you know, with that being said, the um. You know, we can't add another water fee or sewer fee. Um, and any any offsite extractions need to be related specifically to.
The development.
That development. We can't say bias in the fire truck. Okay. We, we know, you could say we don't have a ladder to get up, you know, ladder.
But we could have done it with this hotel down here. This hotel over here.
For.
Or an impact fee, right?
Or for what?
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks.
They agreed to it. The first time you came with the board, they agreed to it.
Water or sewer? I mean, if if this thing, if the sewer line on Main Street won't take what?
That's that's. Impact fee, okay? You're building a building up there and right out here, it's not gonna fit to our sewer line, right? You you expand it. I don't see the fire trucks being an extraction, a legal extraction being made. I don't know if you know the law, but is that, would that be correct?
I'm sorry.
If if someone wants to build a hotel.
Yes.
Just wanna say, well, okay, but we want you to buy us a fire truck.
Well, you can't just say that you have to prove that you need what percentage of it.
And you have to prove that it's something that you don't have, okay?
Right.
So so if we approve of an eight story building over here, we don't have a ladder truck or tower front that gets up that high. We can say you can build your eight story building, but but you need to to supplies for the fire truck. But if you're building a four story hampered in, not tower front, which is that fine, we're we're done.
You can't just, you can't just say, K R engine is is old, which would be nice to buy us another one.
Right.
I would say that's a correct interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, I think it is. So. There's not a lot of, in my opinion, it's not, I don't see a lot of extraction fees out there that, you know, we we can get and and. You know, if if it's something that they caused the town. Think that we need something. Like like a bigger sewer line right out here. To handle something up the street that we can do.
So what if someone's single family home puts you over the limit in that um restricted.
At that eighty.
No, I'm just saying. They just hypothetically, the line is. You know, you need a s- eight inch line, it's only six and you know, my single family home is gonna make, push you over the limit. I can't really.
In relation to single family homes. Uh, there's something in the law that says that that's not.
Well, if I can interject there, we did, we did ask um this, the developer for the Meadow subdivision to um. Look at the capacity issue in Main Street. And that was a, I believe that was like a seven lot subdivision.
Because if you remember right, a couple of years ago. The sewer line up here would take a lot of developments. They put an also the sewer line going back. Connecting down below. That was approved by the planning board, by the way.
I'll tell you what I've heard a lot of. I don't know how this could get. Fixed, but. There are people that goes to the water uses and and the restriction during the summer doing during a drought, or people get. Wicked irritated. When they can't water the lawns or wash the cars or whatever, if you see us building million and a half dollar houses. You know, I can't water my lawn, I can't wash my car, but yet someone built a million and a half dollar house over here. I've I've been, I've been living here all my life and paying my tax and I tell you, I hear that, I swear to God, I hear it a lot. A lot.
Well, uh, again, you know.
It's an apples and oranges comparison.
We have ample. Water capacity. We just, not just, but just a couple of years ago, put in our third treatment cell and we're permitted for another whole treatment cell that that. I don't know, Ray, if you have done a projection on that, but we're not anticipating needing the fourth cell for a number of years. Is that correct?
I. I I I don't know that we did have done that analysis because I think you had, I think it's only been, that that treatment unit has only been online for. I think less than five years, right? Five or seven?
Yes, uh, less than five.
Right, and I'm not hearing from Nate that he has a capacity issue, so.
Yeah, no, and I think the more the the ro- the water restrictions that we put on in the summer is usually based on the state's droughts. Announcement and not necessarily the town's capacity to produce the water. It's more so that. We are in an area that's deemed a high hazard or a high.
We can't, we can't pull it out that much out of the. Inflow.
Does the state limit you? Yeah, the state limits you to what you can take out during a drought.
You know, but we're asked to be conscientious, you know, we're asked to, plus it's more difficult for us to take water.
Like I said, I I can tell you, I.
But it's 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 apples and oranges, you know?
You're trying to tell them that.
Tell them to come on in in time, we we.
I would love to do that.
We we can fill and deliver uh up to two million gallons a day on our current. We'd still need another treatment cell. Right now we can do one point five. But on on a busy day, we don't, we don't hit one point five like. I I don't know if we've hit that ever, have we? Do you do you know, I don't know if you know the numbers?
I don't know. So I mean, um, I'd have to dig those out. I haven't looked at those in some time, but I'm pretty sure that the analysis that we've done so far. To date, um, you have sufficient capacity. We 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 looked at a lot of this when you had the, you know, the whole issue of the the storage tank. Do you have available fire flow? Do you not? Um, so and you're you're you don't, what I rec recall from that. All those discussions and the analysis that was done is you don't have a problem meeting your max day demand and that's what you want your treatment plant to do. So that's not, the only issue you have in your water system really was the water storage issue in the main pressure zone. Which um is being addressed, right? So um that that's your number one priority to address and as far as your treatment plan is concerned. Why you have water restrictions during. State droughts, I I can't, I can't answer that question. That is the first time I'm hearing that. But I do know that you might have intake limitations that when, could you pull water out of the out of the pen, right? So believe you have limitations on your intake structure in the river at low, low flow conditions in the river. That might be the reason why Nate cuts back on, wants to cut back on the demand because. It might be a limitation on the pumping regime at that pump station that takes the water out of the river. So it's a limitation on the infrastructure. It isn't a limitation on the quantity of water that can be made available to your committing.
I'd be interested to know if they have, if the town has one. I do know that Loon has one.
What?
A limitation that they can only with it. At the at at the certain level, when the river gets down, they can't draw for something.
Multiple limits, there's there's the the legal limit, okay, that our permit states. Loon has to stop drawing out of the water at. X cubic feet per second. I don't know what the number is. We have to stop drawing out of the river at a much lower, so so they get cut off way before we do, okay? Um, but that that legal limit isn't um. Uh, is isn't a matter of practicality because our infrastructure under the river. Okay, when the water level is real low, it doesn't soak, it doesn't soak in there fast enough. And it's in this more sediment in there. We can't pull, we can still pull from Loon Pond or we can still pump from from um the the five wells there, right?
That sounds to me like you have a limitation on your pumping capacity based on the equipment that's pumping. It's not, it's not based on. What your treatment plant can ultimately deliver or your store tank can store.
It's how much water. How fast. That intake structure. I mean, I think we could, we could pump the river dry. If if sediment weren't going into the. When it's low low, we can't, we can't suck more water out than it's than it's going by or going se- uh seeping in, I could say. I think, you know, so it's it's a different limit.
Alright, can I add to that?
Yeah.
Twenty-five, thirty years ago. The premmy up in front of my house. Was so dry that year. There was a mend in route uh for the street. Restriction put on the entire white mountain after port, you couldn't go in the wood. You remember that?
I do.
The water went so bad in front of my house, they're going three feet, four feet wide and a foot deep on the whole penny. That's all that's left, that's all the water coming out. You go over the rock, the water was seventy-five degrees coming up the other ends, the heat of the rock.
My father used to tell me that when he was a kid. You you couldn't walk across these branches. It's all I did to take you right under. You look at it today, it's good.
Thank you, Ray.
Thanks very much, Ray.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
No worries.
Collaboration to come to.